This time we'll call it a order, tonight's Committee of the Whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for May the 2nd, 2023. City Council has the minutes from the Committee of the Whole of our April 18th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, is there a move to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the minutes, we'll carry forth. Historic Preservation Commission, this is one of a couple of commissions that is the mayor's responsibility under state law to make the nominations. Tonight, I have a number of nominations I'd like to make. Before I do that, I want to say thank you again to Steve Manos, Lori Sadler, and Stephen Wadsworth for their service on the Historic Preservation Commission. These terms begin immediately, and they are three-year terms that will end in April of 2026. The first nomination I'd like to make is Michelle Held.
Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second from Michelle Held. Any conversation or comments? Ms. Held lives in the district. Her and her husband are very active members of our community, and they have done a nice job on their home over the years, and she enthusiastically wants to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission. Any comments? All in favor of Michelle Held, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll confirm that later on in the agenda. With the second spot, I would like to nominate Mr. John Smith.
Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second for John Smith. Any comments from the dais? Mr. Smith is in the design profession, has just moved here. He has lived in Dothen previously and has served on their Historic Preservation Commission, I believe is what they refer to it as, for eight years. And that is a sizable piece of property and geography in the city of Dothen, and so he certainly brings a unique experience base to Auburn. I believe he'll be great, great help. All right, any other comments? All in favor of Mr. John Smith, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll confirm that later on in the agenda. We do have a third vacancy, and I would like to ask the city manager, we did have an application, we're still vetting that application, and would like to continue to look at that application, but at this time, I would not like to move forward with a nomination and leave this position open, which would leave our Historic Preservation Commission with one less member. How would we go about pursuing this in the future, once we can identify somebody that we would like to move forward with?
The best thing to do would be to reopen applications. This evening, I can announce that during the regular agenda. What I need is, do you want to reopen it between now and the next meeting, or you want to give yourselves till the first meeting in June? That's what we need to know. And then procedurally, I also need you to pull this agenda item off of consent, to just, all you need to do, somebody needs to pull it off of consent, move for approval second, and then I need somebody to move to amend to appoint two people instead of three people.
Sure.
Tonight, and then that way, it can come back up organically, at whatever date you're telling me you wanted to consider on your agenda.
So, Megan, with us not really knowing what we might receive from the marketplace of opportunities and potential applicants, how do we, how do we define the time limit for this?
Well, I mean, the first meeting in June is not till June 6th, that gives you, you know, over a month, or you can go to the May 16th meeting. But when we open that back up, that's only a week of opening it back up before I need to get it to you. So, kind of your choice.
Kelly, I'd like to ask, put you on the spot. You live in the district, and you and Beth have worked so hard on this, these boards and commissions. Do you have any advice for the council regarding this?
Well, my recommendation would be that go ahead and announce the vacancy now and consider it in the, in the meeting in June.
Okay.
Give ourselves enough time for people to consider their, their opportunities.
Okay, good. Is the council okay with that? Everybody okay with that? So?
So I'll announce that during the regular agenda, and then when we get to consent, I need one of you to pull that item off of consent, and again, move in second, and then move to amend to only appoint two people instead of three.
And what is that date in June?
June 6th.
June 6th, okay. Okay. All right. Any questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager? Okay. Ms. Crouch, anything for us?
No, I just, we put some revised minutes in front of you that, they're on our website and so on, that there had been a mistake in an agenda item about who voted how, and that was corrected. So those are just sitting on the dais in front of you.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. Is there a move to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned the Committee of the Whole. It is after 6 o'clock, so we'll move right into our regular meeting. Lindsay, with the roll call.
Adams?
Here.
Oblins?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Briswell?
Here.
Mormon?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Whitten?
Here.
Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please be seated. It is the first meeting of the month of May, and this is the time that we recognize our outstanding employees through a video. So Greg, please.
We're proud to introduce you to our May Employee of the Month, and I have a memorandum here written by Allison Frazier, the Engineering Services Director and the City Engineer for the City of Auburn, to our city manager, Megan Crouch. I am pleased to nominate Justin Foster for recognition as the May Employee of the Month. Justin was hired in 2006 by Water Resource Management, and in June of 2017, he was hired by the Engineering Services Department as an inspector. Justin's primary responsibilities is the inspection of water mains, sanitary sewer lines, and storm sewer installation. He also inspects the grading and paving of new streets to ensure they meet the City of Auburn and the Alabama Department of Transportation specifications. In conjunction with inspecting water mains, Justin is responsible for testing and sampling each water line to ensure it meets the American Water Works Association, Alabama Department of Environmental Management, and Environmental Protection Agency standards for public drinking water. Due to Justin's hard work and dedication, he was promoted to Inspector II in June of 2021. Since his promotion, Justin has been the project manager for the city's annual street restriping project. Justin was Inspector for the recent addition of buckies to the City of Auburn. He was responsible for all the inspections tying buckies to the city's infrastructure and making sure everything was done to city standards, specifications, in addition to inspecting his other subdivisions and site projects. Additionally, Justin is always willing to assist with an issue or a problem a resident may have when they call into the Engineering Services Department. Justin has a call, condemeter, yet a keen understanding of our standard details and specifications to guide contractors and construction, on construction issues and problem solving. Justin does an outstanding job for the city, and it's for this, these reasons and many others that I am proud to recommend Justin Foster as the Employee of the Month. Congratulations. We appreciate all your hard work.
this month. Thank Justin for his outstanding work. Congratulations on being recognized as the Employee of the Month for the City of Auburn. During the Committee of the Whole tonight, the City Council made two nominations and appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission. Michelle Held and John Smith will begin to serve immediately, and they will serve three-year terms that will go through April 20th of 2026. We will also reopen the applications for the Historic Preservation Commission imminently, and we will look to make appointment of an open opportunity on that board at the June 6th Auburn City Council meeting. Under announcements tonight, I do have a couple of things I'd like to speak to. Stamp Out Hunger is May the 13th. This is an opportunity for you to leave some food by your mailbox, and our postal service workers will pick that up and, and deliver that to the Food Bank of East Alabama. This is a great time during the spring to, to assist the Food Bank of East Alabama and the great work and service they do to those who are food insecure in our community. I want to congratulate the Auburn High School Girls Tennis Team for being the state champions with a very dominating performance in Mobile over this past weekend. We're very proud of those young ladies and look forward to celebrating with them in the near future. This coming Thursday, an organization that provides such a fantastic service to Lee County, and in fact, Councilman Mormon's mom is a founding member of this organization. Lee County Youth Development will be celebrating their 50th anniversary of serving Lee County, serving our children, serving our families, serving those who are desperate and in need and are looking for hope and a future. And we look forward to, I look forward to celebrating with them Thursday morning at their, at their event, and I'm just thankful for Laura Cooper and her leadership and the board that provides accountability and assistance to Laura and all of her team out there. They just do a fantastic job. I encourage all of you, if you don't know anything about the Lee County Youth Development, to get yourself educated and understand what a great asset they are to East Alabama and to our community. Also, Thursday's the National Day of Prayer, and there'll be a formal event at the Courthouse Square in Opelika at 12 o'clock that myself and Mayor Fuller will be participating in. And want to remind everybody that the mayor's Memorial Day breakfast will be occurring again this year on Memorial Day, and tickets are available now, Ms. City Manager. If you would like to go, buy tickets or table, please go to the city's website, upper Zoom, and we hope to have a, a big crowd for a very special event. And then finally, I always recognize Councilman Mormon, but I also want to recognize him for being a great-grandfather. So congratulations on your celebration of your family. Anybody else have anything, council?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to, I went by the Sam Harris Park on Friday, and I just want to thank the Parks and Recreation Department because they have, they have started putting the swings in the park, and it's looking good. And I hope that the community will be satisfied and that they would, all the kids are enjoying having some swings out there. We're waiting on the slides next, but it is an improvement to the park. So I just want to thank Becky and her crew for their ambitious with that, being ambitious with that.
Anyone else?
Yes, I, I'll be having a ward meeting on May 23rd specifically for traffic improvements. That'll be happening on Anna Lou and University. That'll be at 6 o'clock, the conference room at the Auburn Public Library.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd like to say I appreciate the job the city did on the City Fest this past Saturday. I got a lot of good compliments about that event, and I know it's a lot of hard work goes into that every year, and I just appreciate the staff and the work that they put into that. Gives Auburn a good look.
Sure does. Thank you. Thank you to all of our departments that played a role in that. Dinosaurs evidently are popular. So, that's great. That's great. All right, anyone else? Okay, this time we'll move forward with Auburn University Communications.
All right. Hope y'all are having a good afternoon. As students finish up their semester and classes come to a close, we look forward to graduation, which is right around the corner. This weekend in Neville Arena, commencement ceremonies will be taking place, so expect campus and the surrounding areas to be pretty busy. After four or even five years of hard work for all these students, we know they're excited to move on with their futures, and we know they'll accomplish a lot of great things. Speaking of accomplishments, a team of four Auburn University Finance and Engineering students competed in the 2023 Global Case Competition at Harvard University. It's one of the most prestigious student-organized case competitions in the world, and they beat over 175 other universities to receive first place and a $10,000 finish. So, really excited for them about that. Other than that, kind of a short report for me. All Auburn students were just ready for the summer, glad to be done for a little bit, ready for a break. I will be here for, during the summer, and I believe we are making steps to reschedule that city breakfast, so I look forward to that, and we're eager.
We're eager. Thank you. Yes, we look forward to graduation weekend. It'll be a lot of people in town. I would say if you haven't made your reservations to a restaurant by now, you're probably not going to get in on Friday and Saturday night. So, anyway, it's a big weekend. Very excited for all the young people that'll be graduating. Okay. All right, now is an opportunity for citizens' communications on items on tonight's agenda. We would ask that you limit these communications into items that are on the agenda tonight. If you'd like to speak to the council about anything on tonight's agenda, please come forward and give your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak to the council. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move ahead with the city manager's communications.
Mayor, under city manager's communications, we're announcing one vacancy on the Historic Preservation Commission. The three-year term will begin immediately and end April 20th, 2026. The appointment will be made at the June 6th meeting. Our first true item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, if you, we would please remove 8E. 8E.
E.
Echo.
And I would like to move, remove item 8C4, 8 Charlie 4.
8C4, yes, sir.
I would like to remove item 8 Bravo 1 and 2. Speak to both of them at the same time.
We got to take them individually.
Okay.
So I mean, you can ask general questions, but yeah, we, so I've got to announce it first. Hold on. Are there any others, Mayor?
Anybody else? Okay, we'll go to 8B1.
Item 8B1 authorizes a submittal of the 2022 Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Annual Report for the H.C. Morgan Water Pollution Control Facility to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Mormon?
As I understand it, we have two facilities. We have the north side facility on the upper end, on the far end of Richland Road, and we have the H.C. Morgan on the south end of town. The Richland Road is only a pumping station, although we have kept the permit active for discharge. And the reason that I wanted to bring this up is because we have been doing an outstanding job on this as a city staff, and I just wanted to brag on the staff a little bit here. So we have two facilities. One is, on the north side, actually pumps to the south side, and that's where we reclaim, I guess, and, and provide that distribution to the streams. But reports have to be done on these annually, and they're extremely lengthy, extremely complex. What I know is that the water tastes good, the water smells good, and the water is safe to drink. Also, I know that we operate well within our capacity, even with Auburn's tremendous growth, which is remarkable. So our, our city staff is to be commended for the job that they do in this area, and I just wanted to bring it up and point it out for these two facilities.
Councilman Mormon, may I clarify? You're just saying that our water tastes good and is good to drink, but our wastewater, you're not insinuating that.
No, I'm.
I didn't want to confuse anybody in the room, like, is that somehow potable water? So, I didn't think that was what you meant, but for people that are watching, I wanted to make sure we clarified that.
That's a rookie mistake. He can still make them.
I knew what he meant, but I wanted to clarify, sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I have no further comments on the part two.
Any other comments? Not that that's easy to follow. Eric, thank you for your staff. Y'all's hard work. All right, have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8B2 authorizes a submittal of the 2022 Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Annual Report for the North Side Water Pollution Control Facility to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management.
No further comment.
Move for approval.
Second. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8C4 authorizes a contract with MSW Consultants to perform a solid waste rate study in the amount of $40,100.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Griswold?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this off the consent agenda because anytime we start talking about increasing rates or taxes or any kind of fees, I know, I just want to make sure the public is aware. This is just to conduct a study to see what is feasible, what is necessary to meet our future needs. This doesn't imply any direct increase in any fees or whatever at this particular time. So I urge those that are interested in that to take a look online with the, the e-packet and read the details on, on what it is that we're considering. I do have one question about the proposal, however, for the city manager. Task 2.2 discusses a vehicle replacement plan review. It's my understanding the city already has a vehicle replacement plan in, in place that covers not just this department, but through all the city vehicles. Is, is that correct?
We, we do have a replacement plan. What this is doing, and I'm going to have our finance director or our environmental resource, I mean, our environmental services director correct me, this is looking at our, how we, how we currently implement that plan versus the solid waste enterprise fund and making sure in our replacement plan that they're building in and looking at our fees, is our fee structure adequate to cover? Did I miss anything?
That's right.
And so this is reviewing our current policies to say, here's what the policies say, here's how often you're replacing, and do you have funds in your current fee structure to cover your capital replacement or capital increase requirements?
Okay, so the individual vehicles that come up for replacement will still come to the council for approval?
Everything does. This is just about our, our solid waste vehicles, vehicles involved in this enterprise fund, not about the rest of the city.
Solid waste vehicles are included in our overall citywide vehicle replacement refurbishment?
Everything because of the price of all of these comes before you anyway, yeah.
But these are, this is already covered by the, the city as a whole?
No, it is covered by the solid waste enterprise fund.
Okay.
So from a financial perspective, yes. From a policy perspective, there's an umbrella, you know, policy where we're looking at replacement of vehicles, but pickup trucks and garbage trucks, two very different considerations, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? You have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item 8E appoints Michelle Held and John Smith to the Historic Preservation Commission for terms that begin immediately and end April 20th, 2026. This item will need to be amended to reflect only two appointments.
Move for approval.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Eric, somebody needs to amend, because the resolution only reflects two appoint, it, it has three appointments in what's in your agenda.
I apologize, I wasn't following you. That's my bad.
Yeah, so I need somebody to amend.
So the motion does not need to be a motion approved. The motion needs to be, motion to approve amended.
Your motion was, was fine. I need a, somebody needs to move to amend to only appoint two people to the board instead of three. That's all.
I move to amend, we only appoint two boards, two instead of three.
Second.
And vote on the amendment.
Okay. So we have an amendment to this. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the amendment carries, and then we've got a motion and a second on the table. Is there any other questions or comments before we move forward on that? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries forth. Sorry about the mistake. All right. I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And consent agenda carries forth. All right, ordinances.
Under ordinances this evening, item 9A establishes three stop signs, one 25 mile per hour sign and one 35 mile per hour sign located in the landings at Academy Drive, Phase 1. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Is anyone in the council have a problem moving forward and vote on this this evening? Seeing, hearing none of their comments or questions. Okay, Lindsay with the roll call.
Adams?
Yes.
Oblins?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Briswell?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Resolutions.
Item 10A1 authorizes a contract with JLD Enterprises LLC for the Martin Luther King Drive Streetscape Project in the amount of $4,523,298.80.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions in the council?
I, I have a question.
Please.
And I'm glad to see this on the agenda, first of all.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's well overdue, and I think everybody's just going to be happy to, to see this contract come about. And that is what we voted on tonight, the contract. I was actually reading the, the outline that you had in the packet. There's not a start date. You won't know that until we actually do the contract, right?
Yes, but I'll have our city engineer speak to that and timing thereof.
Yeah, we're anticipating construction to start by June 1st. We'll have contracts executed hopefully to the contractor this week. I did have a chance to talk to him this morning, so we should, he, he's actually ready to get started.
Okay. Awesome.
That's great. All right, any other further comments or questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have some questions for the city manager. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have some questions for city manager. What's the period of performance on this? What's the anticipated, like, the time for this contract to be executed? I mean, the project to be executed.
It's a X amount of days contract, and she'll get that looked up. There's working days versus calendar days, and Allison, do you recall?
I don't remember.
Yeah, we'll get that for you. I don't have the full contract set in front of me.
Yeah, if you would, I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
And I had a question also about the, the bidding. We only had two bids, and I understand that, but there's a $3 million disparity between one bid and the other. That's a huge disparity. In my days back in contracting with, with the Army is, you see something like that, you're inviting change, uh, change requests and change orders and whatnot down the road. I just want to know, I want to ensure that the staff is comfortable that the JLD bid of four and a half million dollars is sufficient to meet the statement of work.
Absolutely, a couple of quick things on that. We also, we had this designed by an outside firm, Foresight Group, which I also saw some presence in the room from them. But one of the things that we do each and every time a bid comes in is, they're required with the specifications and plans that we put out there, they have got to build everything that's in those plans and specs. And when they go through, you'll see the itemized sheet where there's unit prices, lump sums, and other things. I mean, we look at those. If we think things are out of whack, you know, they can be out of whack. But we're also always looking against market prices, against our estimates that our consultants give us along with current bids that we're getting to see. And I'll have city engineer Fraser speak to how we feel about, about that number and where it stood versus our estimates.
Yeah, our cost estimate at budget time was a little bit over 5 million, so we feel comfortable, we're actually under budget again.
She likes to point that out.
Yes, I like to point that out.
For now, for this time.
The prices are actually good compared to the $6 million bid from the other bidder. But feel comfortable that this contractor has reviewed the plans and specification. They asked appropriate questions during bidding to make sure they understood everything.
And they are required to bill for that dollar amount.
Absolutely.
Now, if there is a mistake in something that we specify, you know, I'm just giving you an example, and we decide, we spec the wrong traffic signal hit or whatever it is, then that would be on us for a change order, not, not their fault, you know, type of thing, but that's, that's rare. Allison would then be over budget, and I would remind her of that.
Yeah, the law covers how we, our, the law governs change orders, so we have to be in compliance with the Public Works Bid Law. And to your point of days, it's a 240 consecutive calendar day job, which would have to account for rain days, anything in a, in excess of normal rain. We typically give the contractor rain dates for that.
So, Allison, with rain days, because I think this is always a challenge for the public and the council to understand that 240 days, that's consecutive days. That's great, but for a rain day, depending on the amount of rainfall, it can be, it's not just, it rained today, you get tomorrow off. It could be six days of rain days, depending on the volume of rain that we get from one rain event, correct?
Correct. Contractually, we ask them to consider normal rainfall events. We use the AWIS Rain Service, but it also is governed by the controlling item of work. If it's a large dirtwork job and it rains two inches, there may be longer impacts because of that rain. So, that's just something we look at on a case by case, depending on the amount of rain and what the controlling item of work is.
And also in supply chain right now, as example on the South College project, beyond the contractor's control, when they've ordered things eight months ago and they're not in, do they get days added because of that?
Yes, they do.
So, we're, we're dealing with something we didn't previously deal with in the supply chain, and that's why people are saying, are saying much about, well, why is Sanford and College, the turn lane at the President's Mansion, isn't open yet? Well, we're having major issues with supply chain. Contractor ordered things on a long lead time, and we're still having issues. So, we also have to give them some days for that.
And some of the things we've done recently, and I'm getting a little bit off topic, and I apologize, is we have pre-ordered some of these things to store.
In this instance, we actually...
And tonight, on our agenda, we've got an item where we've got, you know, portable traffic signals that we can utilize if we need to.
Well, in this instance, Eric Carson, our Water Resource Management Director, pointed out very early when working on this project, hey, we're having trouble with the supply chain. We have to do a massive water line replacement on the MLK corridor, and we already bid, Eric, this is correct, and, and we already have in all the pipe needed for that to avoid that supply chain problem. So, my staff's doing a wonderful job of trying to get ahead of what we know about at the time. That changes, yeah.
Good.
Thank you. And one, one further question. Has there been any success in negotiating with the railroad to get those old railroad ties moved?
No, no. And I mean, what we can do, and we're happy to do, and as I've said to a number of people that live along Railroad Avenue that are aggrieved by this, is, doesn't mean we'll quit trying. We'll continue on their behalf, and it's unsightly for the whole city. I think, as everybody knows, the railroads have unlimited authority, basically, and have for many years, and they can stockpile in their property whatever they want. And even though it's bothering residents, they don't seem to have the pension to move it right now, so. But we'll keep trying.
Please do, thank you.
I want to ask another question.
Please.
So, the flow of traffic, when, once they get started on June 1st, so, um, are we gonna, is it that they're gonna cut the whole corridor off? Or they starting on one side, just to, just to...
I asked the contractor today to explain his schedule to me, hopefully before the pre-construction meeting, so that we know which end he's gonna work on, if he's gonna do all of it at one time. Logistically, they will probably have to put the water line in first just because of where the new water line is relative to the existing one. We expect some lane closures pretty much right out of the gate because we've got to get the water line material there. So, not sure which end they're going to start on just yet. We do have to bore under the railroad tracks at Bird Street, but we'll have a schedule from the contractor of sequencing, hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
But due to the fact that it's a three-lane section there, while we're doing that, we can maintain two-way traffic for the most part.
Absolutely, yes, we put that in the contract.
So, you've got the middle lane, it's turn lane, but we can cone off and shift traffic into those lanes. We'll try to slow people down, which is always a challenge, but we do have the ability here. The medians would be something that, there's some small medians going in, and those would go in toward the end when you don't have to make the lane shifts anymore.
I'm just excited.
Connie, we're all excited.
Well, I know I am.
This is, I know this is very important to the residents of Northwest Auburn and to your ward, but this is a big deal for our community, too. A lot of people use that road, and it's been a long time coming, and I'm excited. And I, anyway, I'll say thank you to the council when we get through voting here in just a minute.
I feel like Tommy did when he was trying to get that roundabout.
You'll have the next three years to enjoy it, I tell you.
I'll tell you. All right, any further comments before Tommy says something else? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, council, congratulations. All right.
Item 10A2 authorizes a license agreement with Pear Tree Group LLC doing business as the hound for the construction of a new patio. It's a 10-year lease with five one-year renewals.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion of second. Any comments or questions from the council? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
You do not have to have a public hearing on that one. It's...
Oh, is that outdoor cafe permit? Sorry, that's my bad, I didn't pick up on that. So, we can go back and open the public hearing and then vote again.
Did I miss something on the...
No, that's me. I didn't announce a public hearing.
All right, so we have a motion of second. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to, just city council regarding this, please come forward, give your, your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Do we need to vote again?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any other comments in, in the council? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A3 authorizes an infrastructure development agreement with Pear Tree Group LLC doing business as the hound for ADA sidewalk improvements adjacent to the city meeting room in the amount of $22,000.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion of second. Does this declare, is this a public hearing?
No.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any comments or questions from the council? Mr. Poyet's here. We appreciate your continued investment in your business in downtown and look forward to sitting outside with you, enjoying some time and some food in the future. Thank you for what you're doing. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10B authorizes the vacation of all or portions of the following rights away for the Auburn Housing Authority Ridge, Ridge Crest Redevelopment Project, Booker Street, Julie Avenue, and Pride Avenue. If adopted, the vacations will only proceed if the housing authority receives funding through the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion of second. This time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address city council on this issue, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. How are you doing?
I'm fantastic, how are all you?
We're doing good, good to see you.
Good to see you all as well. Sharon Tolbert, CEO of the Auburn Housing Authority. I just want to publicly say thank you to the city, from Planning Commission, the city council, and lord knows all the staff, who I've been worrying them to death about this project. You all have been supportive. You all have been there when we needed you, so I just want to publicly say thank you. We are excited about this, about this redevelopment, not only for the Northwest Auburn community, but this will be a substantial impact for the Auburn community as well. So, thank you all for your consideration to this request.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
And I also have our Foresight Group here as well, if you have any questions on the civil engineering side. So, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for the service, you've serviced our community on a number of ways.
Oh, most importantly, thank you to my board of commissioners.
Just being dedicated, thank you.
All right, any comments or questions? Well, there's anybody else that'd like to speak to the council regarding this? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
At this time, we'll open the citizens' open forum. This is an opportunity for you to speak to the council about anything that might be on your mind. We'll ask that you come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. We ask that your comments be addressed to the council and not derogatory towards staff members, but make your comments, please, towards the council. Yes, ma'am.
88 East University Drive. Last council meeting, I spoke about the need for constitutional training and the inclusion of the Bill of Rights and other items into your council training and training manual. Imagine my surprise when just a few short minutes later, the need for my request was proven. A sitting councilman questioned why the same citizens return over and over again and say the same things over and over again. Thank you for the opportunity for me to explain once again about our democratic republic and the vital role that citizens' free speech plays in it. The act of speaking at city council meetings over and over again about the same issues is not an exercise in futility. It is a vital part of our democratic process, a way for citizens to defend our rights and ensure that our voices are heard. We must continue to speak up and hold our elected officials accountable, especially those who have voted against our constitutional property rights. We have a right to express our opinions and concerns to those who govern us. As displayed last meeting, some of the council feel strongly about defending our First Amendment right of free speech. The first 10 amendments of our Constitution, known as the Bill of Rights, is a set of constitutional amendments that guarantees our freedoms of speech, religion, press, assembly, the right to bear arms, right to a fair trial, protection against unreasonable searches and seizures. And lastly, the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments protect our property rights from infringement by those in power. These amendments explicitly state that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. No single amendment should be considered more important than another, and they are intertwined and all serve as the bedrock of our democracy. John Locke said, "The right of property is the basis of all civilization." The reason we all go to work is to acquire property. It's been just over two years now since five of you voted for ordinance 3288. So, today, when you return to your home, I hope you feel proud about your homeownership. Walk inside, close the door, and enjoy the freedom. Then remember me and my home and all the others affected. Five of you robbed me and them of that feeling. Let me walk with you through your house, remember me. When you pray to God and thank Him for living in the freest country on the planet, remember what you took from me. Independence Day is approaching. When you think of that lives lost protecting freedom, I hope you will remember your vote for 3288. So, in closing, I again ask you to include constitutional training in your preparation to govern the citizens of Auburn. As for me, I will continue to engage. I will continue to be passionate about my constitutional rights, and I will continue to speak out over and over again to accomplish needed change.
Who would be next?
Robert Wilkins, 261 Denson Drive, Auburn. Good evening, mayor and council. Bureaucrat bureaucracy. According to the Merriam-Webster dictionary, a bureaucrat is a member of a bureaucracy, an official in a government department or agency who is employed in a position that involves the management of policies and programs. Bureaucracy has existed in various forms throughout human history, but the modern concept of bureaucracy emerged during the 18th and 19th century in Europe. The term bureaucracy was coined by the French economist Jacques Claude Marie Vincent de Gorn in the 1760s to describe the administrative system of the French government under Louis, King Louis XV. During the 19th century, bureaucracy became increasingly common in the European government as countries sought to manage their expanding population economies throughout centralized administrative system. The German psychologist Max Weber is credited with developing the modern theory of bureaucracy, which he described as a form of rational legal authority based on the set of rules and procedures. In the United States, bureaucracy began to take shape in the late 19th century with the growth of federal government agencies. The Pendleton Civil Service Reform Act of 1883 established a merit-based system for hiring and promoting federal employees and helping to reduce corruption and political patronages in government hiring practices. While bureaucracy can be effective and necessary tools for managing complex organization and government operation, it is without criticism. Bureaucratic systems can be slow, inefficient, and prone to red tape due to their complex rules, procedures, and regulations. This can lead to delays and frustration for both employee and the public. Bureaucracy can be rigid and inflexible, making it difficult to respond to changing criticisms or to adapt to new technology or ways of doing things. Bureaucratic systems can resist change and innovative due to the inherent conservatism of bureaucratic institutions and the vested interests of their employees. Bureaucracy can be expensive to maintain, require large numbers of staff and resources to manage complex systems and programs. Bureaucratic efficiency can lead to a lack of accountability and transparency, making it difficult to hold bureaucratic accountability for their actions and decisions. Bureaucracies can also be susceptible to corruption with some bureaucrats using the power and influence to personal gain or to benefit special interest groups. Bureaucracy can be discontinued from the citizens as they are mean to service.
Thank you, sir. Who would be next? Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, before I start, I would like to know if I have permission to hold up a visual aid, but if not, I'm prepared to speak. These aids are not offensive in any way or obscene.
The council doesn't have a rule about that. You only have a rule about when you want things put up on the screen, so that's fine. It's your pleasure.
Would the visual aid be just for the council's purview?
It doesn't matter. I can show the group here. It's for the...
That's fine, ma'am.
Oh, thank you.
For the council, please.
Thank you. Martha Shamp, 307 Camellia Drive. I'm speaking in reference to the obscene materials that continue to be in the Auburn library. Here's a picture of something nice. To me, this represents a child's soul and his clean innocence, his youth. There's nothing offensive. It's natural. There's kindness. This is a child's soul before he learns some very tough things in life. This is a child's soul after he has seen what's in the Auburn Public Library, the sexual disgusting material that's age inappropriate. His soul is no longer gentle, sweet, clean, and pure because of books he has seen that are obscene in the Auburn Public Library that are put there by people who should know better. Please remove these books.
Who would be next? Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Walker, and I am at 2078 Autumn Ridgeway. I feel like I do need to bring a few things up here this evening. Over the past few months, there have just been repeated things brought before the council here. I did get a copy of the rules and procedures that the council is supposed to abide by. I believe in the last meeting, these were followed. I do want to thank people who do stand up for the First Amendment, but I want to make some points around that. Number one is that not all speech is protected by the First Amendment. And we have to also not only defend people's rights to stand up and speak, but the First Amendment also protects the citizenry and employees of the city of Auburn against things like defamation, which is communication of a false statement that hurts the reputation of another. There have been multiple statements made at this podium over the past few months that are absolutely meant to defame the reputation of not only other city employees, but people who live in this city. The freedom of speech is not a defense to destroy someone's reputation. By your rules, you are to defend the employees and citizens of Auburn. In fact, by your rules, rule number six, pictures must be submitted to the city manager no later than 12:00 PM on the day of the meeting. So we've already broken the rules here this evening. I really feel for not just the employees of our city library, but other areas of city employees who in the past few weeks have been absolutely defamed, but also the citizens and groups of citizens of this city who have been called despicable things, defaming them meant to purposely destroy their reputation. I urge you to defend not only the citizens, but also the employees who look to you for leadership and guidance. I urge you to continue to fight for people's First Amendment rights to get up and say what they need to say. But please look at the rules, and please keep in mind that not everything is protected to be said in front of this council and about any citizen or employee. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would be next?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Joanna Abram. I reside at 206 Timberdale Court, Auburn, Alabama, 36830. I'm coming to the podium, which I had no plan to do so, but I must speak regarding to the information that's coming forward regarding the library. Education is huge. The city that we live in, education is huge. To the school system, education is huge. Even though I was not born here, I grew up here. I left and I came back here because of the educational system. We have to, in reference to the knowledge and the growth and the research and things that's taking place in our society as a whole, that's education. We cannot assume that our opinions override the parental rights when it comes to teaching our children what we expose our children to, the individuals, the materials that's at the library. We go to the library for years when we came back here. I didn't see anything offensive about the library. I really, my children and I, we thrived going to the library with the programs, with the knowledge that came forth, with the subject matters that came forth, not offensive at all. We thank you, and we thank the board, and we thank those who are responsible for bringing forth, for enriching, for actually increasing the knowledge that comes forth from our libraries. I come forward to say thank you. Thank you because, yes, opinions matter. However, parental rights matters as well, and parents have a right to either guard their children, protect their children, not let their children to see certain things. So I say that to say allow the parents to do their jobs while the library continues to do its job. And the purpose of them being there, which is to educate, which is to broaden the horizons, to broaden the insights, our capabilities, our knowledge, the research that's coming forward. Again, I thank the existing bodies that has everything to do with what's taking place at the library. And I have to say that because as we continue to speak out, yes, our opinions matter, but allow the parents to do their jobs as well. And if they feel that the parents need, if the parents feel that they need to protect their children, allow them to do so, just as I have done thousands of times. For those of you who I have come to speak regarding the council meetings, me being a supervisor at Fort Benning, training the soldiers, allowing our veterans to actually teach the soldiers, we have to do the same thing when it comes to our military departments. So I ask for this council to continue to do the same thing. Allow us to learn, allow us to be protected, but allow the parents to protect their children if need be. But for right now, continue to allow us to just receive the knowledge and allow us to make our own decisions regarding what we continue to be offensive or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Susan Youngblood, 729 North Carey Drive. I want to follow that by saying thank you. And I love having the choice of materials for my student, for my, excuse me, for my kids, for myself, for others. They can choose what they want to read. The selection is marvelous. I really appreciate the staff of the library. I really appreciate that when I was in a bind this week and my son missed school, the library had the book that he needed to catch up on his schoolwork. But more than that, the library has so many wonderful selections. I can choose to check something out. I can choose not to check something out. That's up to me. Certainly, I am not going to be checking out Alex Jones's work. But of course, that's up to me. And I appreciate that the trust, the trust that the library has put in parents to make our own decisions. I would also like to say I appreciate the local police force and how quickly they responded recently to a call about a very unsafe driver. They really took it seriously. They knew exactly what they were doing. I had a low-resolution picture, and they could identify the driver because the driver had a history, and they were able to do that quickly. And I did not see the erratic driving again. I'm sure the person probably poses a threat still, but the officer was really on it, and I want to say thank you.
Thank you. We're certainly proud of those that protect us. Who would be next?
Mayor Anders, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and the mayor pro tem in her absence, Herbert Walter DeMar Jr., 412 Willbaker Road, Department 111. I echo the comments made by Ms. Youngblood, by the attorney that spoke before you concerning, you know, what decisions should be made by whom concerning certain things. I don't think we should let a small group of people determine what a community should do or should not do in reference to what they should check out in the library, what they should be allowed to look at, and so on and so forth. I also believe in the First Amendment. I believe in God, and God gives us free will. And I hope that you would encourage, in your own way, that free will to continue by allowing the library to do its job, to allow us citizens to exercise our rights to determine who should read what, when, why, and how, within certain standards, of course. And I'm also afraid that some of these, some people not only want certain materials concerning sex out. The next thing you know, they will try to eliminate things in relation to race. You know about the efforts in many parts of the country to remove as many as 10,000 books and materials from libraries and from public views. I would discourage you from getting involved with that. Let the citizens decide on that. Let us exercise our First Amendment rights and as well as allowing people to exercise their Fifth Amendment rights and their Fourteenth Amendment rights as Ms. Bolt and Mr. Wilkins have spoken to you about frequently at this podium. By the way, I had a chance to attend the Auburn Black Alumni Weekend. We're very concerned about the diversity, equity, and inclusion of Auburn University. And we will fight to allow Auburn University to keep that same mindset toward letting its students and anybody related to Auburn University to allow its students to decide themselves how to conduct themselves with certain rules, including the Auburn creed. But give those students an opportunity to make decisions for themselves as to who they are and what they want to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would be next? Okay, is there a move to adjourn? Oh, yes, sir.
Bernard Anderson, 356 Estate Avenue, Auburn. Mr. Mayor and those of you on the council, I want to express my appreciation to those of you and each of you that agreed to appoint me to the advisory board of the library of the city of Auburn. I pledge to you that during the term that I will serve, that I will do the very best I can in favor of all of the citizens of Auburn. I pledge to you that there will be absolutely no forms of hatred or discrimination against any of the communities that live and reside in the city of Auburn. I must say that I am a proud Christian conservative. I'm a Christian conservative pastor, Christian conservative preacher, and I will preach Christian conservative ideas. However, there will be no hatred. There will be no discrimination. There will be no degradation at all. There will be only trying to bring our community together, of course, stating the facts that I believe that are biblically taught, but I'll do it in love. As Jesus did when he was here on this earth, there were many people that disagreed with him, but he loved them all. He even loved those that crucified him. And during that time, we know that he asked God to forgive them. Jesus was perfect. I am not perfect, and I will make mistakes. I will misspeak. I will obviously, from time to time, say things that probably could have and should have been said better. For that, I apologize in advance. However, I will tell you, my heart will be to serve the city of Auburn. My heart will be to serve each and every individual in the city of Auburn, regardless of color, regardless of socioeconomic status, regardless of whatever one's identity may be. I pledge that to you. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank each of you for your vote, and I look to serve the city of Auburn and to do the very best I can for each and every member, each and every member of the city of Auburn. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, is there a move to adjourn?
No move.
It's always wise if you close citizens' communications and then...
Citizens' communication, yeah. All right, is there a move to adjourn?
No move.